This is the regular meeting of the Mobile City Council, Tuesday, July the 29th. Please stand for our invocation led by Reverend Tony Legere, Public Safety Chaplain, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Good morning. Let's pray together on this beautiful summer day. Our Father, we thank you for the gift of life to get up another day, good health, good minds, and opportunity to serve our community. Thank you for our leaders. We pray humbly that you smile upon them and that you favor them with counsel and wisdom that our community be stronger and more like you. Would you favor our time together here at the gates of our city as we give thanks to you in the moments ahead? In Christ's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Brokaw, President Small.
Here.
Vice President Gregory.
Here.
Councilmember Penn.
Here.
Councilmember Carroll.
Here.
Councilmember Reynolds.
Here.
Councilmember Davis.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Welcome to our Tuesday, July 29th, 2025 meeting. At this meeting, we do have rules. At this time, I ask if anyone have any type of electronic device, including cell phones, please at this time put on the off or the vibrate position, the off or the vibrate Interpersonate desired to address the Mobile City Council must sign in, indicating the ordinance to the resolution of public hearing agenda item before entering the meeting. When speaking to the council, the speaker must give his or her name. When the interpersonate desired to speak to the council on an agenda item, must contact the city clerk office no later than 2:00 PM the Thursday prior to the council meeting. The subject that he or she wishes to express to the Mobile City Council must be identified retained to the City of Mobile business. Anyone who has not given a proper note to the city clerk office and wish to speak on an agenda item would not be allowed to address this council. These speakers allow three minutes to address this council. A bell will sound to indicate the end of two minutes. One minute remain for summarizing. The second bell indicates that your time has expired. When addressing the council, there has to be no personal address to any individual council members. All statements are to be made to the chair who will recognize any council member who wishes to respond. To maintain decorum, there will be no undue applause and/or public outcry allowed. Madam Clerk.
Approval of minutes of July 22nd.
So moved.
Second.
Properly moved and seconded in discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes approved.
Communications from Mayor Stimson.
Good morning. It's good to see everyone here this morning. It's an abnormally large crowd. It must be y'all in here trying to beat the heat. We appreciate you coming regardless of why you're here. So I have a couple announcements this morning. One is just to bring focus to the St. Louis Street project. We've been talking about this project. I was just trying to text and find out exactly how many years, but I think it's about eight years we've been working on it. And, you know, it will be done in such a way, we hope to have the least amount of disruption, but we're rebuilding 17 blocks and we'll be doing it a block at a time. Surprisingly, it's $16 million. That's a million dollars a block. I can remember as a child, and I'm going to guess that I was probably 10 or 12 years old, they were building an interstate a million dollars a mile. So things have changed somewhat. But whenever you completely have to do all the utilities, have to be moved, replaced and all, and because of the disruption and you can't just do what we've done on McGregor, shutting down McGregor Avenue probably would be twice as expensive if we hadn't shut it down. So anyway, it'll be a great project once it's complete. And we have several partners that have obviously helped us in the funding. The Restore Act, and that's where most of the money came, which is the result of the BP oil spill. And that money, it comes through Alabama Department of Conservation Natural Resources with Amy Hunter and Chris Blankenship, so we thank them. Aldott has played a huge role in it, the Mobile MPO, as well as the Mobile City Council. Jen Green is the program, she's Director of Programs and Project Management, and she truly has met with, I think, every property on our own St. Louis Street plus others because of the interest it has created. So we should be starting that pretty soon. It's on the agenda this morning, and once it's approved, then just as quickly as we can get the contracts done, then we'll start construction. I also want to point out that we, City Council and the Capital Improvement Plan, which we call the CIP program, you know, we continue to invest in our parks. Last week, Councilman Penn and I celebrated a brand-new playground at Figures Park. It's a beautiful playground, serves kids of all ages and abilities, and it's really focused on physical fitness. And these playgrounds are specially designed, and anyway, so he's actually got three in his district that have been in probably about half a million dollars per investment, right? So anyway, thank you for the investment into your district because now those children have something to do. Another one that we have, we're just replacing a splash pad and an underused waiting pool. It's nature-based design and the kids in District Four are going to enjoy going to the splash pad instead of the waiting pool. And if you need a way to beat the heat, come join us in Lawn Park where we will also have a splash pad there. And let's see, we've got an event tomorrow, no, Thursday morning where Mrs. Billy Aaron and Ozzy Smith will be here. It's a 9:00 event. This is what we call in the second inning, celebrating the Walk of Fame. They were not able to come for the first event, so they will be here for us to celebrate the Walk of Fame and the statues that represent them. Now Ozzy, I don't know when was the last time he was back in Mobile, but he is certainly excited. Mrs. Aaron was here two years ago when we actually had the groundbreaking part. So anyway, it'll be a great event. I think there are a lot of our young baseball players that will be attending, which would be unique for them to be able to see Ozzy Smith and Mrs. Aaron. So I want to recognize some of the Mobile Parks and Rec Department baseball and softball champs. Chad Collins, Chad, I saw him here. Are you going to come down, you and Marcus and Kim, are y'all going to? Yep. So do y'all want to go through the lineup and tell it? Okay. Marcus, do you have it? I'm here. Okay.
You want to do that?
This is Marcus Flukas. Marcus Fluker.
To everybody in attendance, members of the council, Mr. Mayor, we come today to acknowledge our 2025 NPRD Youth Baseball and Softball League Champions. We do this every season. We have a few in attendance, a few not in attendance, so we're just running out for the five U division, the champions were the Trinity Garden Falcons. I would say these people are not in attendance, so we're just going to acknowledge.
Marcus, if we can do this, if they're any of the five and under champs that are here, if they could just stand up.
So right now here, we got the six U Miller Park Astros coached by William Ray, assistant coach Josh Williams, assistant coach Mike Edwards. Also in attendance, we had a 10 U High Point Cowboys coached by Coach Lee White, assistant They say so the five U champions were Trinity Gardens, the eight U champions was Texas Street, and the 12 U champion was the Duval Braves. Like I said, they are not in attendance, but we just want to congratulate the champions that are here and thank them for a successful season. Now we had a 10 U High Point Cowboys, like I said, coached by Lee White, assistant coach Tyler Baker.
So Marcus, is that all of them? Is that everybody? So I think everybody observed that the six and under champs, they are the best dressed.
Yes, sir.
And we appreciate their coaches dressing them all up. They really look like a fine bunch of young men, so that's great.
So we appreciate the opportunity to be in here. Y'all have a good day.
And the last announcement is a proclamation, and if y'all noticed, we have beautiful ladies dressed up in costume. These are part of the Pelican Girls Mighty Girl Marching Group. So y'all can make your way toward the podium, and really you can go the other way. Easier to do. So Bella Myers is a direct descendant of one of the original Pelican Girls. And so I want to read this proclamation and you find out when the Pelican Girls showed up. But there's still to be a living descendant living in the city of Mobile is very unique. And since they're all in costume, I don't know if she's trying to hide or if she's going to reveal herself, but Bella, we're delighted that you and the other ladies are here. And after I read the proclamation, one of you would be glad if you were to make some remarks. And then we can go outside afterwards. I don't know, maybe the city council wants y'all to stand down in front and we'll have a picture with y'all. Okay. So the proclamation reads, whereas the city of Mobile holds a rich and enduring history as the first capital of French Louisiana, founded in 1702 and rooted deeply in the traditions and legacies of those who first settled this region, and whereas among the earliest of us, Pelican Girls, so named for the ship Pelican upon which they travel, and whereas these young women of good character were sent by King Louis XIV to Mobile in 1704 in response to the colonial officials' urgent pleas for marriageable French Catholic women to help establish and stabilize the colony, and whereas 23 girls, most between the ages of 14 and 18, recruited from orphanages and monasteries around Paris, were granted the freedom to choose their own spouses, an uncommon liberty for women of the era, and arrived in Mobile on August 1st, 1704. And whereas through courage, resilience, and strength of spirit, these women helped lay the cultural and familial foundations of our city, and today, thousands of people throughout the United States proudly trace their lineage to these pioneering women. Now therefore, I, William S. Stimson, the 108th mayor of the city of Mobile, do hereby officially proclaim August 1st, 2025, as Pelican Girls Day in the city of Mobile. Congratulations and thank you.
I'm honored to be able to represent this amazing group of women that is, that are here today representing the Pelican Girls. The sacrifices were tremendous, their bravery is tremendous, and 321 years in the making for recognition for them truly being the mothers of Mobile is tremendous. They gave up everything that they knew in France, the foods they loved, the families they loved. You notice I put food first, but the foods they loved, the families they loved, the community, the climate. And they came here to Mobile. And without them, really, the question becomes would that permanent settlement of Mobile have remained a permanent settlement without their insistence and their petticoat insurrection or rebellion? So a little bit of civil disobedience helped Mobile from the very start. Thank you, and thank you for the recognition.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We have the Hankins family join me at the podium for reading of a proclamation. So my tennis coach from high school is standing here behind me, Coach Pope. It's always good to see him. All right, I'm going to read the proclamation, then we'll take a picture afterwards. Whereas, Mrs. Catherine Irene Hankins faithfully served the city of Mobile for an extraordinary 37 years, beginning her career in 1987 as a 911 phone operator, demonstrating a steadfast commitment to public service from her very first day. And whereas, she transitioned to the Parks and Recreation Department where she served as a reservation clerk, later rising through the ranks to become a purchasing clerk, earning promotions to OA 2 and OA 3, and managing purchasing operations with care, precision, and keen understanding of the needs of our city's parks. And whereas, her work has directly supported the enjoyment of countless citizens by ensuring that Mobile's parks, splash pads, and recreation facilities were thoughtfully equipped and maintained, enhancing the quality of life for generations of residents. And whereas, retirement marks not only the end of a remarkable career, but the beginning of a well-deserved chapter of rest, relaxation, and new opportunities, and it is fitting that we recognize Mrs. Hankins for her distinguished service. And whereas, her dedication, institutional knowledge, and positive spirit have left a lasting legacy and will be deeply missed by her colleagues and citizens she served with pride. Now therefore, we, the members of the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim Thursday, July 31st, 2025, as Catherine Irene Hankins' Day in the city of Mobile, and urge all citizens to join us in honoring her 39 years of service and wishing her a retirement filled with joy, fulfillment, and well-earned peace. Congratulations.
Madam Clerk.
Mr. Carroll.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This morning, it becomes my privilege as a Senior Bowl alumni that had the opportunity to play in the 1993 Senior Bowl to introduce to you and to Mobile the Senior Bowl's next executive director. His name is Drew Fabianich, but I just call him Drew. Drew is a seasoned football executive with over 37 years of experience in coaching, scouting, and player development at both collegiate and professional levels. A native of Longmont, Colorado, Drew began his career in 1986 as a quarterback, wide receivers, and passing game coordinator at Mesa State, which is in Colorado. He later served as a defensive graduate assistant at Baylor University and held coaching positions at the University of Tennessee, the University of Tennessee at Martin, the University of Louisiana Monroe, and White High School in Dallas. In 2003, Drew transitioned to a career in scouting with the Dallas Cowboys, we won't hold that against him, but I do love the Cowboys, where he spent 18 years, including 14 as a national scout. His tenure with the Cowboys was marked by the successful identification and evaluation of talent contributing to the team selection of multiple Pro Bowlers. In July 2022, Drew joined Auburn University as the general manager and director of scouting and development. In this role, he was responsible for enhancing Auburn's recruiting efforts, player development programs, leveraging his extensive NFL experience to benefit the collegiate program. The following year in 2023, Drew returned to the Big 12 Conference as the general manager and director of scouting for West Virginia University Football. Head coach Neil Brown praised Drew's wealth of experience and his alignment with the program's vision, expressing enthusiasm about his contributions to building a championship-caliber team. Throughout his career, Drew has been recognized for his deep understanding of football operations, talent evaluation, and player development, making significant impacts at both the collegiate and professional levels. City of Mobile, surrounding area, all the states that view our Senior Bowl, the greatest game of college talent in the United States of America played right here. I'd like to introduce to you its new executive director, Drew Fabianich.
Great pleasure. Thank you very much. Thrilled to be here, thrilled to be part of this community. My wife and I walked as quickly as we could when we got down here. We're slowly settling in. I do want to make a slight correction. The premier All-Star game always has been, always will be.
Amen.
That's my job. I'm the steward for this, you know, position now. The guys before me have done a great job, you know, as far back as, you know, Phil Savage, Jim Nagy, you know, this has become, you know, what it should be, and I'm here to improve. That's what I'm here for. Great pleasure to be here, great place to be. You guys have embraced this game, which I think the NFL understands, and I've embraced this community, and hopefully you'll embrace me. And one more thing I was told to say, our flag football registration is ready to go. It's online. Thank you.
Was that an invitation to play flag football?
Not for me and you.
I mean, the mind's willing, but the body might not be able.
I was going to say, too many clearances, we got to fail. But thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Yeah, it's a pleasure in having you and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Yes, good morning, Mayor, members of council. This is the monthly finance report for the month that ended on June 30, 2025. On page one of your report, I've highlighted in yellow our beginning and ending balances. Our reserve fund at the bottom of the page, again, is a static number. It's $58,626,210. General fund operating balance on July 1 was $113,160,977. We ended the month at $117,944,182. So again, another positive month for the city of Mobile. The next page, page two, are our, we're getting at our largest revenues. Top of the page, we have sales tax. Now to the right, you'll see that our year-to-date budgeted was $149,97,824. We actually took in $147,422,572, slightly under, but not alarming percentage-wise for the budget. Just below that, the sales tax year-to-date was up a little bit over the budget, $6,983 budgeted, $6,538 was actually brought in. So a positive month net, or at least that helps the sales tax reduction be not as instrumental. The next page, on page three, business license at the top of the page. The year-to-date budget for sales tax was $49,139,723. Year-to-date revenue was $50,801,116. Business license in the PJ, year-to-date budget was $2,370,838, we're at $2,40,129. Again, a net positive number when you combine the two numbers for the year. Proceeding through the budget to the next page, our total revenues at the bottom of page four, year-to-date budget was budgeted at $281,125,738. Year-to-date actual was just over that at $283,766,594. So again, another positive month and a positive year for the overall budget operating for the city. As you flip through the next few pages, page eight, the last page, is the most important of those pages, and I can answer any question or attempt to on the pages in between. On page eight, at the bottom of the page, you'll see our net income or loss for the month. Our net income was $4,783,205. Our year-to-date budgeted expenditures were $273,278,254. Year-to-date actual, $229,214,057. The difference in that is our over-under from what we have referenced before, where we had money that went to capital last year, didn't have to go this year, and we're under in our budgeted expenditures. Obviously, we're near the end of the fiscal year, so we'll reconcile that this year and include that in the fiscal '26 budget that you see, but everything before us is positive numbers, mostly on the revenue, just a little over overall, and significantly under on our expenditures for the year.
Any questions or comments from this council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Woods.
Thank you for the report, Scott. Just a quick question. The reserve fund, when do we readjust that? Is that a? Is that a quarterly readjustment, or is that just an annual readjustment?
It'll be annual. So when you see the budget that's presented to you, you'll see the reserve fund, and it will grow. It will be greater than this because obviously we anticipate the budget to grow.
And that'll be off of projected versus actual performance, I guess?
Yes, sir. It's off your projected revenues for fiscal '26.
Excellent. Thank you.
A question. Our projected budget overall is $352 million for the year. We're showing right now at this date, $273,278?
That was the year-to-date. That's what we have budgeted year-to-date to be spent. Yes, sir.
Or is it, that number seems to be about $80 million from our total overall target, and this is, we're about to hit the month of August, which is putting us at the end of the year. Are we on target to receive everything that we budgeted for for this fiscal year?
For our revenues?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
We are?
Yes, sir.
And are we gonna meet or exceed that number?
It appears we're gonna be flat on it. It appears we're gonna be almost on the number.
Almost on the number?
Yes, sir.
And last year, we budgeted conservatively based on what the projections looked like for this year?
Yes, sir. So we're required under the law. We cannot increase our revenues except for what we saw growth revenue from the previous year. We were flat last year, so we stayed relatively flat this year, and we expect the same for '26.
And what does the projection look like for '27? I mean, for '26, 20, yeah, '25, '26, I'm sorry.
So '26, the budget that starts October 1, the revenues will be relatively flat.
So we're looking at about the same for the next year?
Yes, sir.
Are there any other places to pick up additional revenue outside of grants and fundings that we get from different sources from the federal government or the state?
Obviously, there may be some opportunities for those as we get into the fiscal year. We recently, we will apply for a SAFER grant, which I think you guys discussed at the last meeting. So there are some opportunities whether or not we get those. There's also some discussion about implementing the business license for leased properties that we'll get into in a greater discussion. So that will be the next area that's already on the books to be discussed. Outside of that, revenues, as we see it now, are projected to be level. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Scott, for the monthly report. Can you remind the public what our general reserve fund? It's at $58,626,210. What, how much we supposed to keep in that particular account? Is that three months, two months?
It is two months. It's 16.66% of the general fund's operating budget. The ZOBIA requires that we keep only 2%, which is clearly not enough for a healthy reserve. So the City Council, through its ordinance that we passed in December, I believe, made sure that we codified that reserve at 16.66%, 16.66, just to make sure we are fiscally responsible and financially healthy.
Right. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
Mr. Collins, I want to ask you about the police and fire pension and where we stand with funding that unfunded liability that exists. When do you expect that we will completely fund the unfunded liability and then only be responsible for making sort of maintenance allocations?
So the unfunded liability, the last year of those distributions will be fiscal year '26. The budget that you see coming to you this year, it will be fully funded. It will not be required to be paid in fiscal '27. The draft budget that we put together right now shows us with a contribution of $17 million. We haven't gotten the actuarial study back yet. We know we're gonna be somewhere between 16 and 18. So we've budgeted it at 17, and we hope to know in the next 45 days what that exact number will be. But this will be the last fiscal year, '26.
That is fantastic news to hear that this longstanding unfunded liability will be retired in 2026. Regarding this document, though, if you look at police and fire pension, where we had a budgeted amount and then an actual amount, and we're substantially less than what our budgeted amount was year-to-date. How does that affect, do we just roll that money over to next year if we're not having to make contributions at such a higher rate?
No, sir. We make that contribution periodically through the year. So that's just a distribution of cash so far. Once we get to September 30, you'll see that number fully funded for the year.
Okay, so the projected payoff in 2026 accounts for expending this full-budgeted amount?
Yes, sir. We're required to spend that, and we will.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President.
Mr. Carroll.
Talking about the unfunded liability at $17 million. In my mind, I have a number of $36, $37 million of legacy debt that's also supposed to be paid off in '26, '27. Is this $17 million a major part of the legacy debt that we're talking about?
No, sir. The legacy debt is different. The police and fire pension is just that. It's the fund, the unfunded liability for police and fire pension is separate from the legacy debt. The legacy debt is debt that existed when Mayor Simpson and his administration came in 12 years ago now. That legacy debt was debt that already existed. The city didn't engage in issuing any new debt over those 11 years. The legacy debt is nearing its payoff. That legacy debt pays off in fiscal year '29, '30. So there will be a bit of an overlap between the arena debt that will start in '26 and the legacy debt that will expire in '29. Once '29 expires, then it will be expired forever. So we will see numbers coming back to us in fiscal '27 of the police and fire pension unfunded liability, that's $17 million as we know it today. Will come back to the city in '27. The unfunded liability, or the legacy debt, which is $23 million, will expire in '28.
So with the level funding and projections of revenue being flat, then there's really no room for growth with new projects and new things other than what we already plan to handle over the next three and a half years?
Well, we know for sure, Councilman Carroll, that in '27, there's gonna be just a bit of a challenge. We knew that going in, and that's okay. That was cash flow. Through '26. Now, when we get into '27, the $17 million is going to police and fire pension, whatever that turns out to be when it comes back to us, because there will be some money that goes. But I think for conversational purposes, I think you can look forward to having $15 million of that $17 million available to the general fund in fiscal year '27.
'27, '28.
'27, '28, yes, sir.
So '28.
Yes, sir.
So roughly three and a half years from now, we'll be able to breathe a little bit with our debt service. Three and a half years from now.
Debt service, yes. We are 15 months away from being relieved of that 15 million.
Anyone else? I thank you so much.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Adoption of the agenda.
So move. Prop the move and second in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Agenda is adopted.
Appeals. We have requests for a wave-of-the-noise ordinance on August 2, Public Safety Memorial Park, February 17, Spring Hill Avenue, and August 30, Doyle Park.
So move.
Second.
Prop the move and second in a discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Bill passes.
Public hearings today is a public hearing to consider the application of Katun Ahmed for a certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a shuttle service.
This opened up the public hearing for this particular said item. Is anyone present that would like to address the council on this item? If not, this public hearing is closed.
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council, Mallory Mangold.
Mallory Mangold. Mayor, council members, thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm here to make a statement on behalf of several of our local animal welfare organizations, including Crew Day Rescue, Wags and Whiskers, Save a Stray, the Pretty Pity Committee, Meows and Muts, and myself. My name is Mallory Mangold. I'm a local attorney. I was born and raised in Mobile. I'm a foster and a volunteer with several of our local rescue groups, as well as our local animal shelters, including the City of Mobile Animal Services. Today, I want to talk about the city's plan to invest $10 million in building a new animal shelter. While I understand the intention is to improve conditions for homeless pets, I urge you to reconsider the approach, not the compassion behind it. I think we can all agree that we certainly need a new animal shelter. However, a new building alone does not solve the core problem. It just gives us a nicer place to warehouse the consequences of inaction. It's a Band-Aid on a gaping wound. Because what we're really dealing with is not just an animal problem. At its root, it's a human problem caused by backyard breeding, accidental litters, and most importantly, the lack of access to affordable spay and neuter. Until we address that, no shelter, no matter how big or shiny, is ever gonna be enough. What we need is prevention. What we need is a city-supported, low-cost spay-neuter program. The city must use a more data-driven approach, and the data is very clear. Cities that have only invested in infrastructure without prevention programs have seen shelter intake surge and just continue to rise. Taxpayer money continues to be spent in pound, house, feed, and for many euthanized these animals. Heavy investment on the front end and prevention will save the city and the taxpayers money in the long run. Right now, Mobile County takes in over 7,000 animals a year, and at least half of those come from inside the city limits. A single unspayed female dog and her offspring can produce, is it over?
You have one minute.
Can produce up to 67,000 puppies in just six years. That's the math we're fighting. No building, no matter how modern, can keep up with those kind of numbers. Importantly, Mobile is the only major city in the state of Alabama that doesn't have a government or county-funded, low-cost spay-neuter program. If we put even a portion of that $10 million into prevention, we can reduce intake, reduce suffering, and reduce the need for crisis housing altogether. That's how cities reduce euthanasia. That's how they stop the revolving door of suffering. Please don't mistake a shiny new building for progress. We have an opportunity to invest in solutions that actually work and build a more humane, more responsible, and more cost-effective future for Mobile. If rescues walked away tomorrow, the entire system here would collapse. Rescue groups are not a substitute for responsible city policy. They're plugging holes in a sinking ship. If the city wants to see real change, it must fund prevention.
Yeah, you had reached your time. So let me ask you this question here. So what are you really just asking the city to do?
I'm asking for the city to either take a portion of the $10 million that's been set aside for the shelter, $200,000, $300,000, to invest in a spay-neuter program for low-income individuals. If that's not a possibility, if the full $10 is needed for the actual shelter, then I would ask the city to set aside $200,000, $300,000 to start a spay-neuter program here locally. And I'd be happy to send everyone an email after this meeting with my data. I've looked at cities all over the country in similar size to Mobile that have done this successfully. Because the issue is if we don't stop the prevention, I mean, if we don't do prevention and keep them from coming there in the first place, then we're always just gonna be trying to keep our head above water.
Yeah, that'd be great. So let me ask the city, don't we have some type of programs, spay-neuters at different times of the year?
While he's coming, any questions or comments from this council? Vice President and Mr. Penn.
And thank you for coming. I appreciate that, and I agree with you. I know we do some spay-neuter programs, but I don't think it's constant. Is it, I think that would be the question, and I appreciate the information before Robert starts. If you could send us maybe some other cities like size and how they have gotten this kind of a program started so that we can look into that, you know, if we're able to provide that sort of assistance. But I would agree, you know, you gotta stop it before it gets to the situation where we, you know, have to deal with it on the other end. So thank you.
Good morning, council. Yeah, I want to start off by saying fundamentally, we don't disagree. We think that spay-neuter is the long-term solution to a lot of our overpopulation problems. So we definitely do not disagree on that front. We do, through our partners, we do offer low-cost and subsidized spay-neuter for publicly-owned animals, but that is processed through their organization, not directly through the city. The city currently does not expend funds from the operating fund for spay-neuter. Now, that is something we're looking at down the road as the years progress. I know that Mr. Scott just talked about where we are with the budget, but that is something in the future that I'm looking at adding to our operations.
Question.
Hello, Mr. Carroll. Have you finished, Vice President?
Yes, I appreciate that. I'm happy to know that you all are proactively looking at something like that. And then, at the same time, Ms. Mangold, if you would send us the information, we would appreciate that.
Mr. Penn and Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Mangold, for coming down. My question is, have you submitted what you just shared to the administration already? All the information you just shared about the programming and opportunities. So I would love for you to submit that to them as well as us. I think that's some great information. I think the goal is to figure out how can we move forward together and what strategies and what resources. And so if we can have that information and you submit it to them, we can look at some things, and let's figure out how we can move forward. But I think it's a great need for the city, and thank you for coming to share. And I look forward to reading and receiving that information and moving forward and see how we can work together to make that happen.
I'm gonna see you today. Thank you.
Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. My question was real quick. Robin, does spay-neuter come from operations? Does that cost the spay, and it comes out of your operational budget?
For, to spay-neuter city animals or to spay-neuter public animals?
Oh, public.
Right now, we do not fund out of operations fund a spay-neuter public animals.
So where is it funded from?
That is funded through our nonprofit, the Friends of the Group.
So when we're asking to take a portion of the $10 million, that's coming from a capital line, is that not correct? So we could not cross those dollars with the request that she's made? So the request that she made, you couldn't take that money out of the $10 million?
Yes, sir. That's correct. Now, obviously, we've heard what was said. We're in the budgeting process now, so we'll take this information and take it right back to us upstairs and see what we can do with this discussion to see if there's a way within Robert's budget at animal shelters, see if they can find some middle ground to at least a startup program for this.
And also took it to the fact that there was no opposition to the building of the new facility. We just wanted to have additional resources within the new facility. That's how I took that to be, correct? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
Garrett Williamson.
Part the redundancy. Good afternoon, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name's Garrett Williamson, and I'm a lifelong Mobilean, a business owner. And for the past 29 years, my wife and I have been deeply involved in animal rescue. I'm here today not just representing Save a Stray, but standing with many dedicated rescue agencies across our city who fight daily to solve a growing crisis, one that no shelter can fix. Mobile is a hotspot for stray overpopulation. Why? Because our warm climate allows for year-round breeding, spay-neuter rates are still too low, and backyard breeding is all too common. And while we're all grateful the city has earmarked $10 million to address the shelter issue, the truth is, unless we address the root of the problem, no shelter, no matter how big, will ever be enough. Let me give you an example. Save a Stray is a 100% volunteer-run nonprofit that operates the only low-cost spay-neuter option in the area. This mobile unit, which runs only four days a week out of donated space, donated power, has already performed 2,731 surgeries since January 1. At this pace, they'll complete over 5,000 this year. Here's what that really means. Just those 5,000 surgeries will prevent an estimated 400,000 unwanted dogs and cats over the next five years. That's not theoretical. That's reality based on known reproductive rates. We're talking about a tidal wave of animals that never have to enter a shelter, never have to be euthanized, and never have to suffer. And this impact is coming from a single mobile unit funded by volunteers and grants. Now imagine what could happen if this model was supported by the City of Mobile. If the new shelter included a built-in, fully-operational spay-and-neuter clinic, not only would every animal leaving the shelter be altered, whether through direct adoption or rescue agency, but the city could drastically reduce future intake costs and strain on its own facility. To put this in perspective, even the City of Mobile uses Save a Stray's clinic, paying a driver to transport animals across town to access affordable services. Rescue groups from as far away as Pensacola make the same trip because there is no other option. And I want to be clear, I'm not here today to demand you choose an organization over the other. In fact, I believe every rescue group should be heard. We don't just know the volume of the problem. We understand the mechanics of the solution, and we want to help. You may hear voices that are frustrated, emotional, and passionate because this work is hard and the need is endless. But behind all that passion is a wealth of experience and willingness to work with you, not against you. What we're asking is simple. As you move forward with plans for a new shelter, prioritize a functional, permanent, low-cost spay-and-neuter component. Don't just build the house the problem, build in it. We're not asking the city to do everything. We're offering to help because we all want the same thing for the day to come when rescue groups like ours are no longer needed. Thank you very much.
Mr. President.
Mr. Reynolds.
I've got a question about this comment about people traveling from all over to get spay and neuter with your service.
Yes.
So as a city, we've seen this sort of happen before with Mobile Public Library, public transit, many other things where the City of Mobile sort of gets stuck with the bill, like all of our taxpayers get stuck with the bill, so people are now coming. like all of our taxpayers get stuck with the bill, so people are now coming from, you know, the unincorporated areas, Mississippi, Florida, wherever. How do you make sure that the citizens of this city are getting this low-cost service while excluding others?
Well, this would be a low-cost service. So we are saying there will be some pay involved, and of course, the way that Save a Stray operates right now is through a grant program. They actually have some grants that actually cover some of the expenses. I'm sorry, I wish I did have all the questions with that. Do keep in mind, I do PR work for Save a Stray, I do some fundraising, and I sleep with the directors, my wife. So apologize for not having all the questions. I believe she can answer further, but I know she wasn't on the agenda to speak.
Yeah, I think everybody's in general agreement that you got to get to the core problem, but I think everybody's also in a general agreement that the facilities that we have are wholly inadequate.
Right.
But you can't build your way out of it and just have, you know, you can't house animals at an endless rate. I'd be interested to figure out if we were able to come up with some sort of spay and neuter program, how would we be able to separate the services provided to our citizens versus, you know.
Two things I would say about that, if you don't mind, and that is that currently the city is required, and pardon me if I don't know all the rules about this, but the city is required to take in stray animals, and they have to clarify if that was in the city or the county, and that is asked at each of the shelters. So I'm sure part of that, the way that we do that could be used also in this particular program. At the same time, if we build the only low-cost spay and neuter option in the area, then there's no wrong with, nothing wrong with helping out the other communities in that, that we would be making a few dollars from that, at least setting it up to where it could be somewhat of a, maybe not a profit center, but yet it would be balanced cost, it would be a zero cost to us through a low-cost option. There are some programs out there that few people in the crowd know better than I do that actually help support the low-cost spay and neuter, and if we are charging the people that are bringing their animals there, we should be able to get this into a balanced situation. The reason I say that is that Save a Stray has done just that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Reggie Hill.
To the citizens and stakeholders of Mobile, greetings. Reggie Hill is my name. I rise today to continue these pertinent conversations pertaining to city business. Let's begin, please, with the restoration of the Plateau Africa Town. We passed recently a welcome center contracting agreement, and unfortunately, the DBEs that were involved were under 15%. I believe it's actually quoted to being about 5%. This is something that I would like us to review and to look into as well, seeing what the census reported from 2020. It might be time for us as well to examine that majority and minority rule and kind of flip some of those things the way these contracts are going now, not to separate the ideas of these businesses in a manner like that, but we just want to ensure that everybody has the opportunity to be at the table, particularly with development projects of this size. Let's look at the housing component, please. I mentioned previously before that I was going to come back and address, excuse me, these matters, particularly pertaining to the authority and the board CEO. There was a recovery agreement, which was supposed to ensure that oversight came from this body. We haven't really seen any results from that. There hasn't been much talk from this diocese or anybody in the administration. We can have a follow-up on that, it'd be greatly appreciated. We realize that there has been a displacement of thousands of people here, and this led to a crisis, really an epidemic with our housing, what we're considering our housing. The HUD Fund that we know as well, where some of these resources have been going to the Community Development Department, I think we've been labeling them as CDBG, ESG, home grants, these type of things, so we can check these boxes where they were actually supposed to be going towards the restoration and upkeep, excuse me, of these other facilities, the public housing units. So basically, I'm calling for an investigation in this from this body. We know that the ZBIAC grants the power to this group primarily because there are multiple conflicts of interest when it pertains to this, and we know the story even with Miss Trotter being displaced with business that wasn't handled correctly, particularly even in the courts. And these things are dangerous, and they impact the quality of life for everybody. Looking at this economic development component, we're getting ready to review a lot of material dealing with our resource. I'd like to revisit the allotment that we gave to the chamber, ensuring that we're making sure business, when they come in, they keep that employment here in the city, and as well, look at ways that we can get startup and small business incentives. We need community-driven opportunities. Places like the Dearborn Y, where we're saying this idea of not having a site plan is the reason why we should consider it. No, we need, that is a part of economic development as well, and we should protect and preserve these entities that have been here for generations. Lastly, looking at this public safety piece, there was a shooting this morning, there were two earlier this week. Two of those events were involving young people. The majority of these events have been in District 2. While we shouldn't even be considering proposing a new budget, I would like us not to necessarily put more officers, because like the tone of what we heard earlier, we want police our way out of this. We're going to have to invest in initiatives that are actually going to reshape the mindset of our younger people. So let's be proactive in that. We don't have a problem with solving crime here in the city of Mobile. We have an issue with preventing it, and it's not going to happen unless we put the money in the right place. We know the time doesn't allow it, we're going to have to continue this conversation later. Thank you. Be on the floor.
No undue applause. No undue applause. Madam Clerk.
Anna Bush, regarding Resolution 211031.
Thank you, everyone. My name is Anna Bush, and I live in District 2. I actually wrote a speech, but I did want to address a couple of questions that have come up. The Friends of the Mobile Animal Shelter has been the sole source of city public spay and neuter, as far as I know, forever. It used to be vouchers that we gave out to the public that they could use at any vet. Those were all funded through FOMAS and through some grant monies. So the city, to my knowledge, has never provided monies for spay and neuter for the public. Obviously, the animals that have come through the shelter, the city is obligated, I believe, to fix and does. FOMAS is actually contributing a substantial amount to that right now to help stretch the city budget. In 2022, I retired from my real job to help where I could at the shelter, through the nonprofit. I've seen a lot. I see an incredibly hard-working group of kennel techs, animal placement personnel, and animal control officers who are doing more and more with inadequate resources and in unacceptable conditions. 108-degree heat indexes, snow, torrential rain, tall grass and vermin, while trying to help angry and distressed citizens and animals with serious problems that cannot be addressed in the space. Is there another city department that can only have meetings and lunches outside because there is not enough space for all of the employees to be in one room? The city shelter is not merely inadequate, it is grossly and horribly inadequate and has been probably since the day it was built, but certainly for modern standards. The thought of moving any money out of the capital money to replace that facility at this time is unconscionable. The money allocated is inadequate, but so help me, don't lower it. This capital money has got to be spent. The facility has got to be built. I'm disappointed about it, but I'm able to move past it. I've lived with a lot of disappointment in animal rescue. Let's do this, okay? Now, legal seizures, adult animals, owner surrenders, none of these are going to be touched by spay and neuter, certainly not anytime soon. Absolutely fund spay and neuter, absolutely create a voucher program, absolutely create a space where people can get animals fixed. If they don't live in the city limits and they come to me for assistance and I have a spot, fine, you pay the rack rate, which means at Save a Stray, you pay the phenomenal amount of $95 to fix your dog. You know what? A lot of people just won't show up. It's unbelievable. There's such a huge burden to overcome. I have a 20% to 50% no-show rate, sometimes from people who have paid. Oh, we just can't do that to our dog. Okay, whatever. It's a dog, people, let's move on. And I love them, but we have to, we have such a huge education and, I guess, cultural barrier right there that that's maybe something to address for another day. It's certainly something we need to be working on, but the shelter has got to be built. Is that my second buzzer?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, I mean, I wanted to just talk a little bit about the fact that going, the city going into business as a veterinary service may have some other problems.
Councilman Carroll, bring in one minute.
Okay, I apologize. I feel like there's a lot of hurdles with that. I believe that that is a great space for the nonprofits. I think they're working well. I believe the city potentially could offer, again, a type of voucher service where people, if they wanted to use a private veterinarian and the veterinarian wanted to work with that, that would be great as well. I think veterinarians have come around a little bit where it's not quite as much of a, you're taking my business away, but it's something that is going to need to be navigated, and it's not necessarily the role of the city to provide this private service. It is the role of the city to provide an adequate facility for animal control, for animal adoptions, for animal safety, and possibly education and things of that nature. And I don't know that, we may be trying to cross a bridge that's not built yet.
Was Gina?
No, go ahead.
Robin, some of the stuff that she's mentioning, are we incorporating those into our process in this new facility?
Well, I do want to keep in mind that we, what you're seeing today is the contract for the design of the facility, so we really haven't kicked off, but these are a lot of things that we intend to discuss during the design process.
So a lot of the operational issues, you guys will take it under advisement as the building's been developed and designed, and hopefully will incorporate a lot of concerns of the people that are talking to us about the needs into the building itself?
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Thank you.
All right. Vice President.
Thank you, Robert, and thank you, Amy, for coming down, and Anna, I appreciate what you had to say, and I believe Councilman Carroll had covered the capital dollars issue earlier, that capital goes to capital, and we intend to make sure that it stays that way. But if we are looking at an infusion of 100,000 to 200,000 to help a spay and neuter prevention program, I think that is something that we would be certainly all willing to look at, and how that happens, I think, is where you all come in, how to make the best use of the money to get the most prevention that we can possibly do, whether it's in our building, which might be a good place for it, or somewhere else. So I think, you know, having you all here with the expertise that you all already possess to help us make the best decisions is really, really important.
And I think it's important to understand that right now, the city budget is stretched to the point that the city is not fully able to fix all of the animals being adopted from the city, at least not in a very quick way. And through the great help with Save a Stray and some other groups, and my organization and some helpful citizens, we have funded, we're funding 120 spay and neuters in the next three months, paying the majority of the fee.
Thank you. That's good. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk.
Colette Huff, regarding 88042.
My name is Colette Huff, and I am the CEO for Dearborn YMCA, and I'm here today to oppose the sale of the land located at 305 North Dearborn Street, which has been a vital part of the YMCA's campus. The Dearborn YMCA is the only remaining YMCA in the city of Mobile and one of three remaining heritage YMCA's in the country, which were established during segregation when essential services for minority, the minority community were limited. We have been serving the Mobile community since 1933 with programs and services that promote youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. The property we are addressing today is part of the YMCA campus that was established through funding from the Department of Housing and Urban Development. That property is a part of a public-serving property that has supported generations of Mobile families. The Y and its partners have hosted countless community-based programs and events on this property, such as soccer camps, petting zoos, Healthy Kids Day activities, back-to-school rallies, and much more. This space serves as a part of our community park where children play, babies are strolled, and seniors walk to stay active. The land is more than a green space. It is critical to how we serve and reach our community. The original escrow agreement conveyed this property for the public good. The YMCA has honored that commitment. The city has approached us about assuming ownership of the property where the Y currently operates. 305 North Dearborn Street is a part of that property. We responded to the city in good faith, but we never received the necessary documents to complete the process. Now, without resolution, the city appears poised to sell part of our campus. This would permanently alter the landscape of community service in our area without legal clarity, transparency, or public input. So today, I urge you to halt the proposed transfer of this land, conduct a legal and ethical review of the original deed, and bring all stakeholders to the table before making decisions that affect the Y and the community that we serve. Dearborn YMCA has always served the people of Mobile. Please do not allow the land to be removed from that service. Thank you.
Any questions, comments from this council?
Mr. President.
Ms. Carroll.
This morning during pre-council, I asked the council members that if by next week we don't have a proper outline of whatever program or process that the administration is trying to go with this, that we table this issue. I'm extremely aware of how the Y uses the property simply because I've been up there so much lately with the other projects going on, and I see the area. I'm aware that you push the kids around that park, I'm aware of the people that use it every day. I'm also aware that it's also fenced in, and I don't want to have the city cause the Y any unintended consequence. This is now the second conversation that we've had on this property and the transfer of property from the city to another entity about the Y, and that we need to make sure that whatever we're doing, it is absolutely correct. We need to make sure that we take a look at the 1970/60 deed in the transfer of property, and whether or not the city said that it was no longer needed for public convenience and transferred to the Y. I'm also hearing of another contract that's out there. If there's another contract out there, then somebody needs to produce the contract so that it can be read by all people, so that we all understand what's going on and what date that contract was written and who it was signed by, so we know what's happening and why it's happening, what administration did it, and what year, so we're all under the same umbrella and we're all understanding the same things. The last thing that we want to do is put the YMCA in a situation where they cannot continue to operate and serve the kids of the communities in which they serve. They serve an underserved community, they serve people that do not have the resources that they, that lots of us have. Now, I understand a lot of the administration is asking that this facility start generating its own revenue and produce programs that generate revenue, but however, I think about 90% of your revenue comes from grants, right? Which you guys compete for every year. So in essence, the programs that they're generating are actually grants that they're going after on a competitive base, which means they are producing revenue, maybe just not in the way that some of us perceive that they are trying to produce revenue. Thirdly, my question would be to the actual Y themselves. If this property is city property and there was a want or need for it, then why hasn't the Y asked the city to transfer it to them over the last 20 or 30 years? If it's a true need to the Y, then the Y can make the same request as other for the transfer of real property that you have guys have been using for the public good for so long. That's a question, too. Why hasn't your board asked the city for that same request?
Well.
I'm not quite finished. Now, there's also a second piece of property in this ordinance that's a triangular piece of property at Lion Street. It's just over half an acre, it's triangular, and by the way it's shaped, you really can't put anything on it or build anything on it. Plus, it's surrounded by the property that Mamga has bought, plus the gas station and other facilities, so it's really, it's a piece of property that's owned by the city that the city really can't do anything with. I don't have a problem with the sale of real property, you know, to any entity that would like to take on that property. We've done that 100 times with the port, we've done it with other entities, we've done it, I think we've done it with Alstel over at the property over on the island, and we've done it with all types of entities that have developed better areas around the city and better businesses in economic development. We've constantly done that. In this case, if knowing the future development that Mamga wants to do on that other block with the, I think that's the whole high decision. with the, I think that's the Ohajis, the Ohajis Funeral Home, and redevelop that and turn that into an immensely nice block, then I would think that the city would be okay in the transfer. But however, I am really concerned, as I said this morning, about the transfer of the property immediately behind the YMCA, which they are using every day to benefit their business. So if we don't have a clear understanding, a clear program, a clear definition of what they're doing by next week, then I'm going to ask that the council table this until we have a true understanding of what's happening. Thank you, Mr. President.
Can I ask this question? Okay, to answer your question as to why the Board of Directors for Dearborn YMCA has not come to the city and asked to take ownership of that property? That's part of the premises that we have operated on since we've been in existence there in that facility. I think it was 1976. And it's in a gated area. And it never came to our attention that the property was being placed up for sale or that it would not continue to be part of the property that Dearborn YMCA operated on. So we did not have the opportunity to even address that with the city because it was never brought to our attention.
So I would ask the administration to allow the Y the same opportunities as have been asked by MAMGA in any way now, in a transfer of real property for whatever use it may be. Now, on top of that, though, the city has also been trying to give you back the YMCA as yourself to manage it yourself. So when you start to ask for real property and them transferring property to you, you may put yourself in a situation where the Y can't operate because you don't have the necessary funds to operate it. The city's carrying the budget over there of $450,000 a year in operational cost bills and everything else. There are some things over there that the city has not done yet that when I look over there, I see there's still roofing that needs to be done by the city. There's still interior completions that need to be done by the city. There's still lighting corrections that need to be made by the city over there, which according to everything that I remember, is, was, is, and was a city obligation in the maintenance of that building. And at this point in time, I would hope that the city would be looking to continue that agreement and to make sure that whatever we do over there is whole over the next few years. I understand where our city budget is also, in looking for ways to increase our bottom lines by taking things out of our budget that we've been carrying so that we can continue to do some of the other things that we have. But sometimes we have to be really careful on where we try to increase our budget and who it may unintentionally harm in the case of doing so. Thank you, Mr. President. I can make some more comments later. But as I requested, if we don't have a clear line of success for Dearborn Street YMCA by next week, then I'm going to ask that, and that's on both parties, all that is involved, including MAMGA and including the Y and including the city. I'm going to ask that we table this once again until we have a direct path that works for both the Y and the city. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President?
Mr. Penn and Ms. Gregory?
Thank you, Ms. President, and thank you, Ms. Huff, for coming down. Most people know how I feel about nonprofits from any youth-serving organization. Nonprofits changed my life. If it wasn't because of the YWCA in the Tomaville community, I wouldn't be here before you right now. They gave me speech therapy. They provided resources and opportunity for a community. And I know recently, you all have, you have that building now in the Tomaville community. I'm just letting everyone know, I'm not going to do anything to hurt and hinder the progress of the YMCA. The service that they provide our community is well-needed. And when you, sometimes we look at funds and we say, we don't want to put this amount. We don't realize that if we don't invest in these kids, then in potential, we'll be spending money, more money, on other issues and challenges in our community. We need the YMCA. We need other nonprofit youth services. So my suggestion is, I heard you, Ms. Huff, and you stated that you want to be at the table to have these discussions. I just, I heard Councilman Carroll, and I believe he's saying the same thing, is that hopefully between this week, you all can sit down and have this discussion, figure out what's the best route. But I'm letting everyone know, whatever the best route for the YMCA, that's the route that I want. And so hopefully during these discussions, everyone can come to the table and figure out what's the best route. But I support the YMCA. Thank you, Ms. President.
And mine is truly just a follow-up to make sure that I understand that you all would be interested in purchasing this particular piece of property.
Well, it was our understanding that it was part of the property that was supposed to be deeded to the Y anyway.
Okay, so still some confusion going on. And I think Mr. Carroll and Mr. Penn have both covered that. That given a good, a good, hang on, a good week, because this is a first read, there will be some time to clear things up. And if they are not completely cleared up, then I think, as Councilman Carroll has suggested, we can table it so that we can get everything straight and figure out who owns what. And then be able to get you a seat at the table so that you all have at least interested party status so that if you're interested in purchasing the property, what would that take, sort of thing? Along with MAMGA too, because, you know, we have to look at everything that is involved here and make sure that we are fair and equitable in how we do our business. Yes, sir?
I'm George Irvine. I'm a lawyer for the Dearborn Street Y.
Put the mic over so we can hear you.
I'm sorry. I'm George Irvine. I'm counsel for the Dearborn Street Y. And they asked me to come this morning and also speak, but I wasn't able to get signed up in time before the sign-up sheet went away. So if I could have just a couple of seconds, I can answer your question a little bit more.
If my colleagues would agree?
It takes three. I'm good.
Okay, all right.
The fact of the matter is that, and we really welcome the opportunity to meet with the lawyers for the city and MAMGA and try to work this out to get an understanding. But the fact of the matter is, there's a recorded escrow agreement. So the escrow agreement provides that the deed to this property was held in escrow and was to be delivered to the Y after 20 years, after the construction of the building. And I don't know why that didn't happen, but it doesn't seem like it happened. And the purchase contract that is an attachment to the ordinance that you're being asked to consider requires the city to warrant title to the property. And I don't think the city can do that because the city, there's a claim that the Y already owns this property, should already own it. It was a ministerial act that the deed wasn't recorded. So, you know, there are lots of problems legally with what purchase agreement that y'all are being asked to approve provides. And I think it may, all due respect, it may take a little longer than a week to try to get everybody on the same page to understand what those problems are. But there are real legal problems with the city agreeing to sell this piece of property and warrant title to it.
Question, and this is of the administration too. If there was agreement in place with the warrant deed to where after 20 years and the property returns to the Y, then does that mean, does not mean that the building also returns to the Y and all properties and removes the city totally from it? And now that all operations become the responsibility of the Y? So in essence, the Y should already be responsible for making their own payments and operational budgets and everything else, and the city not handling its capital response? I mean, I mean, I mean, that's what your lawyer just told us.
Well, I'd like to comment on that. As you mentioned, the Y is primarily funded through grant programs. We're making a strong impact in this community. We're increasing graduation rates, reducing drowning rates, taking care of our seniors and making sure that they're engaged and healthy. We're improving the health and wellness of our community. We're feeding the hungry. We're doing so many things. And we are reducing crime rates by instilling the proper values and educating our youth. So although this escrow agreement may state that the property should be deeded over the community, we still need the city's support. I mean, we heard today how you're planning to provide support to animal shelters and so many other things, but we need to invest in the people of our community. We're serving the most vulnerable population, and we need the city's continual support. It would be unreasonable to strip the Y of all the support that the city provides. I know you stated that the city provides us with $450,000 of support annually. I've never seen documentation to support that. We don't have access to that. We've asked the city for that before. Based upon what we are knowledgeable of, I don't think that number should come anywhere near 450,000. But we do need the city's continued support.
That $450,000 comes from all of my years of experience down here and knowing what has transpired. And also back from, I sat on that board for, I want to say, four, five, six years back in the late 90s. So I'm very familiar with, well, at that point, I was very familiar with operations over there. But I'm also familiar with the fact that there's been a turnover of multiple executive directors over there. And yes, there's been multiple executive directors since 1999. And there's been maybe some loss of information and some information that did not transfer where all boards did not have the same information. Now, I am on the Y's side, and I have been on the Y's side because we've had, this is our second conversation. And the first conversation ended much in a way is, we're going to support the Y and support what we do and the services that we provide to the kids that we do. We're going to, we're going to continue to do that, but we have to make sure that we do it in a way that is also fair and equitable. My concern right now is the same. I'm not going to move forward with any ordinance or resolution until I completely understand and I am completely sure that the Y is going to be in a position where it's able to hold itself sovereign.
All right, Ms. Huff, yeah. But just make sure to give us, email us copies of that deed to every council member.
We've actually gotten it from the city's attorney.
Okay, okay.
The escrow agreement.
So, so there's no paperwork that you all have? Okay, everything that you have just came from the city?
Yes, it has. And can I? Yeah.
Or public records.
Public records, okay.
Mr. President?
Mr. Penn?
I think this is a bigger conversation. Like hearing, you know, the challenges, even if the city was to give, because of the contract, the deed, and all that, the facility, we need to make sure that the Y is able to go forward. And I believe that we need to have a bigger discussion going forward and have a conversation. So I don't think we are able to do that here today. And so I think, I'm, Councilman Carroll, I'm not, you know, but I think, you said it already, is that we need to meet. And so I'm requesting from the administration's side, Dearborn, MAMGA, organization, the foundation, just everybody to sit down and just have a discussion. Because I believe everybody wants the best for our youth. And so if everybody wants the best for our youth, we should be, we should be able to have a discussion.
This item is going to be laid over anyway, so they have one week to work on it.
Could I make one more point?
Mr. Carroll?
No, go ahead. I would.
Go ahead.
I don't think Dearborn has any problem with the conveyance of that other little triangular parcel. We don't really understand why the two parcels were lumped together in the same ordinance. But if, you know, y'all want to bring the ordinance back with just that one, we have no dog in that hunt.
I'm in agreement with that. Again, this is something that I see may take more than a couple of weeks. And like I said, next week, if we don't have this together, I'm going to ask the administration that we either lay this over or table it until, no, I'm going to ask this council, because it's the council's agenda, that we lay this over or table it until we, until we have everything exactly clear.
All right. Thank you all. Madam Clerk?
James Williams, regarding 01-1026.
Good morning, Councilor. How are you all? What facilitates a discussion between the city of Mobile and Cypress Creek?
If you'd give us your full name.
I'm sorry. James Williams. My friends call me JW. And my question is, what facilitates a discussion between the city of Mobile and the Cypress Creek Golf Course regarding facility upgrades? Are there any legal, financial, or other interests that the city has with the Cypress Creek Golf Course?
Mr. President, I can answer this.
Mr. Reynolds?
This is the Mobile County New Golf Course. It's called Cypress Creek. The county owns it. So this is just simply the city participating in its development and construction.
Okay. It's owned by the county. Thank you.
Ordinance is held over. 64-038, consider rezoning property located at 5945 6030 Range Line Road and 5933 Rabbit Creek Drive from R.A. and B5 to R1 and B5. 64-039, consider the modification of a previously approved plan and approval for a property located on the northwest corner of Loyola and Provident Lanes. 64-040, consider the modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at the northwest corner of Loyola and Provident Lanes. 64-041, consider the modification of a previously approved planned unit development for property located at 5487, 5491, and 5495 Hilltop Drive South.
So moved.
Second?
Property moving second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item pass.
CIP resolutions held over. 21-984, authorized contract with H&amp;H Electric Company for Westside Park Ball Field lighting improvements.
Property moving second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item pass.
Resolutions held over. 08-985, approve item best bid for surveillance cameras and equipment. 08-988, approve purchase order to Dana Safety Supply for vehicle outfits. 08-989, approve purchase order to IBM Solutions for herbicide treatment applications on drainage canals and ditches. 08-990, approve purchase order to Joe Bullet Chevrolet for pickup truck. 08-991, approve purchase order to Long Lewis Ford for six Ford Bronco SUVs. 08-993 and 994, approving purchase orders to Sand Some Equipment for street sweeper and a garbage truck. 08-995, approve purchase order to Cyber Sport for pickup trucks. 08-996, approve purchase order to Target for new flooring for National Maritime Museum. 08-997, approve purchase order to Temple for traffic signal equipment cabinets. 08-998, approve purchase order award in National Trucks for Crew Cab box truck. 21-1000, authorized contract with McLean Construction for the innovating St. Louis Street Mobile Technology Quarter Complete Streets Project. 31-1001, authorized to mayor to apply, accept, and receive a grant from the U.S. Department of Justice. 37-1002, consider the application of Wendellin and Darren Clark for certificate of public convenience and necessity to operate a shuttle, to operate a non-emergency medical transport service.
So moved.
Second.
Property moving second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item pass.
Ordinance is being introduced first time, 88-042.
Per council rules, this ordinance will be laid over for one week.
Consent resolution is being introduced for the first time, 03-1004 through 46-1042.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of these resolutions as read.
Second.
Property moving second. End of discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived. Madam Clerk?
03-1004, point Maggie Brings to the Mobile City County Youth Council.
Mr. President? I just wanted to take a moment real quick.
All right. Let's finish. We'll come back to the discussion.
Okay, sounds good.
09-1005 through, 09-1012. No, I'm sorry. 09-1005 through 1007. Our transferring funds from District One discretionary account, District Two, District Three discretionary accounts, District Four, District Five, District Six, District Seven, and District Three. And that is 09-1005 through 09-1012. These transfers are going to the Convention Center to assist with Hall of Fame walk events. 27-1013, designate poll workers for the August 26th Minnesota 271013, designate poll workers for the August 26 municipal election. 581014, declare weeds noxious, weed lean group 1667. 601015, approve award special bonus to the Administrative Services Employee of the Month. 601016 through 601023 are determining appropriations to Azalea City CDC, Future Leaders Working, B.C. Rain High School, Irwin, Craighead Elementary School, Mary Bell Elementary School, Morningside Elementary School, Palmer Pillings Middle School, University of South Alabama, JAG Girls Serve a Public Purpose and Approve Payment. 461037 through 461042, honorarily renaming Carter Street, Carver Avenue, Jesse Street, Railroad Street, Third Avenue, Road Street as honorary Ms. Wanda Nod Daily Way, honorary Ms. Ella Marie Irving Way, honorary Ms. Levanis Fisher Way, honorary Margaret Ann Mixon Way, honorary Ms. Pearlie Mae Watson Way, and honorary Salome Sweet Wiley Way.
Some moved.
Second.
Properly moving second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passes.
CIP resolutions being introduced 211024 through 211025.
Per council rules, these, uh, resolutions will be laid over for one week.
Resolutions being introduced for the first time, 011026 through 601036.
Moved away the rules for immediate consideration of Resolution 21-1032, with the rest being laid over for one week.
Second.
Properly moving second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Rules waived, Madam Clerk.
211032, authorized contract with Southern Grease Hauling for grease trap pumping maintenance and inspections at various city locations.
Some moved.
Second.
Properly moving second, ending discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolution passed.
Announcements.
Uh, District 6, Councilman Woods.
Uh, Ms. President, thank you. Um, I just wanted to quickly, she had to slip out, but I did wanna go ahead and recognize Maggie, uh, Brains, uh, the, who's, uh, appointed today as our, as District 6 Mobile City County Youth, um, Council. Um, she's a sophomore at UMS, um, she's earned honors with distinction, uh, plays soccer, she's vice president of the scrub club, uh, she's in SGA, um, and she's in numerous clubs of war. She volunteers tremendously about, uh, through the community, um, with Victory Health on a weekly basis, uh, uh, she volunteers at Outback Mobile, um, and also, uh, with, um, other organizations locally, and, um, her mom and dad, I know Tyler and Kate are, uh, very, very thrilled to have such a successful and, and a generous, um, young lady, so I just wanted to say congratulations to Maggie, um, and, uh, thank you for, for serving as the District 6 rep. Um, did also wanna just point out real quick, uh, August the 2nd is the inflatable pop-up event at Meadowbunner Park, um, the grown-up edition, and that's from 7:00 to 10:00 p.m., uh, hopefully, uh, everyone could turn out for that, I know that's gonna be a exciting evening. And then, um, did wanna take a moment, uh, September 16th, uh, we're gonna have a, um, District 6 meeting at Oak Park Church. I just wanted to go ahead and throw that out there, there'll be a mailer going out and, um, further, further announcement of that. Um, with that, that's it, appreciate it, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Woods. District 2, Councilman Carroll.
Thank you, Mr. President. It saddens me today to acknowledge, uh, the passing of two individuals. One is a campground legend in the memory of Thomas Caffey, uh, right at Anne Street, uh, just a community anchor, he and his family for over 50 years in that location, and our heartfelt condolences go out to you and your family, and peace be with you. Uh, but also to our St. Mary's and McGill Tulun family with the passing of my daughter's classmate, Will Glass. You watch these kids grow up from kindergarten and first grade all the way through the 12th grade, and kids like this become family because they deal with each other every day, and when you're in a parochial school system like they were and you see each other every day, it becomes part of your own family. So, our condolences to the Glass family also, uh, may you find peace and resolve during this time.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Carroll. District 4, Councilman Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, over the weekend, the Southwest Mobile County Chamber of Commerce held its annual Kids Day, uh, and just so that everybody remembers, is Councilman Josh Woods is the president of the Southwest Mobile County Chamber Board, and they had a fantastic event. I don't know how many book bags they gave out, but they gave out a lot, and there was, uh, Mobile Fire Rescue. I wanna say thank you to Director Lasky for, um, on a moment's notice, getting Mobile Fire Rescue to come out and have a bucket truck out there so they could have this big, uh, ball drop, is what they called it, for all the kids to catch these balls and win prizes. Also Theodore Fire, they were out, the United States Coast Guard, Captain Snowden, they landed a helicopter out there, one of those smaller ones out there. Uh, Mobile Police Department and the Mobile County Sheriff's Office all participated, and I think a lot of kids, you know, had a lot of fun, uh, this weekend, so thank you, Councilman Woods, for making that happen. Also, uh, as the mayor stated, on Wednesday, this Wednesday, at 11:30 a.m., we are going to cut the ribbon at the splash pad, the new splash pad at Lawn Park. We hope everybody comes out and enjoys the festivities. Our goal was to try to get this done so it could be used this summer, and it looks like we're just gonna make it, and I appreciate all the effort of, uh, the administration and everyone, the contractor, everybody involved to see to it that it got done. That's it, Mr. President.
Alright, thank you, Councilman Reynolds. District 1, Councilman Penn.
Thank you, Mr. President, I'm asking the community, um, District 1, the City of Mobile, to keep the family of Mr. Lovett in your prayers, um, he was a longtime teacher at LaFlore High School, um, and he's recently transitioned, also as well as keep, um, my former student, um, Dinesky and his, the, the Dinesky family in your prayers, he's transitioned, um, as well this week, and so it's been a, a pretty challenging week this, a week, but, um, let's keep those families in your prayers. Um, this past week, we had an opportunity, like Mayor Stimson stated, to cut the ribbon at Figurs Park Playground. Uh, what I'm excited about, that's our third playground, um, in District 1, uh, for this term, and all three, uh, playgrounds are demonstration sites, and what that means is that it's exclusive for, um, anybody, any accessible and make it an opportunity where they can enjoy themselves. The Park and Mill Street has a ramp where if, if a kid or adult, wheelchair accessibility, where they can play and be a part. It's the only three demonstration site parks in the City of Mobile, and they're located in District 1, and so now Figurs Park has a playground where the kids can enjoy and have a great time. I also had the opportunity to attend the Second Annual Latino Opportunity Summit. They shared a lot of great information, a lot of great knowledge of what we can do to help, um, our Latino community in the City of Mobile, and so I'm grateful for the opportunity, for that invitation, and then I had a great time at the Jazz Festival that was located here in the City of Mobile. Um, I was able to attend the Poetry Night as well as celebrate living legends from the City of Mobile, so, um, I'm inviting the next year for everyone to come out and enjoy. This week, we will have our fifth annual Back to School Bash at Figurs Park from 3:00 p.m. to 5:30 p.m. Um, you, we're gonna give out a thousand book bags, um, sponsored by the Tulun, Tulun Nays, uh, organization, and so come out and be a part of that. And then on Tuesdays, we continue to have combo with Cory. I wanna give a big shout-out to Ms. Hall, who came in early today, she had to leave, but she's a student at South Alabama, a junior there, and we're grateful for her wanting to learn more about city government. Thank you, Ms. President.
Uh, thank you, Councilman Penn. District 7, Vice President Gregory.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. I just want to, um, recognize Friendship Missionary Baptist Church on Cody Road for the huge free market giveaway and Back to School Bash on Saturday. I got to play a small role in that, uh, it was tremendous. They had all kinds of items to give away, um, from kitchen appliances to, you know, dishes and comforters and towels, just everything you would need in your home, and then following that, we did a Back to School Bash with school supplies and other, uh, needs that you have going to school, as well as hot dogs, hamburgers, and that sort of thing, which is always a great treat, and of course, Mobile Fire Rescue was on hand, as was Mobile Police Department and McGruff, so it was just a really wonderful event for the entire district and city as well, because people come from all over for, for these sorts of events, and they, you know, help everybody. So, again, just a, a big shout-out to Friendship Missionary Baptist Church for all they do in the community and for inviting me to be a part of it, so thank you.
Thank you, Vice President. Gratitude to the citizens of District 3 on last Tuesday at the B.C. Rain High School, Revitalized DIP, the Palençula, and also, uh, Riverside, uh, Community Action Group had came and co-sponsored a forum along with, uh, Food Champ at, um, B.C. Rain, and I'd like to thank all the candidates that came out on last, uh, Tuesday, that expressed their, uh, thoughts and the concerns, especially in the area, and I also like to thank all the citizens who had came out on last Tuesday. I saw many citizens across from District 3 that came to South DIP. Again, that's what moves our community and our city, is citizen participation and with the participation or hearing from the candidates, and I think from the administration.
Motion to adjourn.
Properly moving second, ending discussion. All in favor?